Call to order the Concord Township 2022 Tax Budget Meeting. This is an annual meeting as required by a hard-ensured code. And as it is the fiscal officers' meeting, I will turn over to our sponsor, Amy Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is really the first step annually in certifying our tax budget. And what we're basically doing is, well, first of all, we made appropriate notice. And two copies of the tax budget have been on file at the fiscal office for the last 10 days. What we're doing is, tonight, the goal of this is to discuss the funds that received tax levy funding and to send this information off to the Lake County Auditor so that he certifies it, okay? So, we are required by law to hold a public hearing and to vote on this information that we're going to be submitting to the Lake County Auditor. And you need to do that before July 15th every year. And then we need to send this and a certified copy to the Lake County Auditor by July 20th. The Lake County Auditor then holds a public hearing, usually in August. And at that public hearing, it's actually the Budget Commission, it's the Lake County Auditor, Lake County Treasurer, and the prosecutor which make up the Budget Commission. At that meeting, then they certify the tax docket and they get it back to us. At that point, then you look at it, see if there've made any changes, and then you accept that. So, that's accepting the amounts and rates, and that'll come later, okay? So, what, the information that we're, I'm asking you to send to be certified, we have inside millage in the general fund and the road and bridge fund. We have a fire levy right now that was a five-year fire levy that was voted on November 7th, 2017. That's 2.7 mils. We have a safety services levy that was voted on November 3rd, 2015. That's four mils. Road levy is two mils, and that was voted on 11/8/2011. And then we have a bond levy that was just voted on 11/3/2020, and that's .6 mils. Those funds that I just talked about, those levies, that's outside millage. So, our inside millage is split between the general fund and the road and bridge fund. And basically, what we have to do is, we have to send actual information for 2019, our actual figures, our actual figures for 2020, the estimate for 2021, and that's based on the permanent appropriations you've already approved, and the amended certificates of estimated resources. And then, it's an estimate for 2022, what the budget's going to be. We only have to do it for those two, three, four, six funds. Five, six, okay? We also have to declare our schedule of indebtedness to the Auditor's Office. We have no debt inside the 10 mil limit right now, effective tomorrow. We'll have outside the 10 mil limit, fire stations construction, it's .6 mils outside, it's 26-year bond. The ordinance resolution was passed in February of 2021, or January, sorry, 02, 2001. And the amount of debt that we'll have going into 2022, the principal debt will be $7,725,000. So, I don't know if you have any questions about that. It's pretty straightforward, it's the same exercise I've been doing for 16 years, so...
This is the, so we did the estimated resources earlier, and this is kind of the first step of that, because we're now looking at 22.
For next year, yes. This is declaring that we would like our tax fund certified for next year, and that's the first step of that.
And, you know, if I'm hearing you correctly, then when we do the, you list the actuals for the previous years, and that's what we use to build our projections and our estimates going forward.
Yep.
And then the auditor will go through their business and make sure they concur, they'll do their...
That's correct.
Property valuations and all of their accounting, and then, so, we really just need to review this information, agree upon it to be sent to the auditor for their step in the process.
Right. And the only one I didn't do actual for 2019 and 2020 was the bond retirement fund, we didn't receive any funding. So, I'm estimating this year how much we're going to get. I did that based upon what we've received already, we should have received half of it, we'll get another half in the fall.
And you said the ordinance date on the fire station construction levy?
I don't know what the date was.
Okay.
The resolution was 2021...
Oh, 02, I got you. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
That was an error for me, yes, it absolutely was.
That is referenced properly, okay?
Just a quick question, Amy. The only two funds that involve outside millage is the general fund and the road and bridge?
No, inside millage.
I mean, inside, right.
Yes. Yeah, and that was a choice, I don't know how the trustees way back when decided that. I know other entities do general fund and fire. Ours has always been road and bridge and general fund, primarily because we are, by law, we're responsible for taking care of the roads. If we have no outside millage, we still have to take care of the roads, so... I want to take, you know, comments from the audience, if all of us do have other questions for me.
Okay, we do have some audience here this evening, so I would entertain if anyone from the audience has questions for the trustees or the fiscal officer. And would you just please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Brian Massey, 8196 Rainbow Drive. Mr. Dawson, I received Schedule A from the Auditor's Office, and I was trying to follow what you were saying on the outside millage.
Okay.
They're saying that there is a 2012 fire levy for 2.7 mils.
Correct.
The effective millage is 2.39, it looks like. There's a road and bridge for outside millage 2012 for 1.7 mils, effective 1.5. Road and bridge 2017 for .3, and that effective millage is .277. And then the safety force 2015, 4.0, that is an effective millage of 355. Are those correct? I...
I don't have a Schedule A in front of me, Brian, so I have a...
Yeah, you had mentioned some number, you had mentioned...
Oh, I said 2.0. I combined the 1.7 with the .3, which I've done over the years. And they'll break it out because the 1.7 was the renewal, and the 1.3 was the increase.
Good, okay. I was just trying to follow you with the schedule.
So, is that for, because I don't know what you're looking at, is that for this year?
Yes, well, it's 20, tax year 2020, collection year 2021.
So, the .6 won't be on that. When you get a Schedule A for next year, that's the information that'll be contained in here.
Yeah, it does have the debt levy on here for six. Okay, so, we're in a...
The property that I have.
We're in agreement, then, on the years, is that correct? You had mentioned 2011.
Oh, that's when it was voted on. It's effective...
I see.
The following year.
And just to tag off from Mr. Massey's question, then, is it correct that on Schedule B, the dates that are listed, is that every time that, like, say, the 2.7's renewed, that's the last time it was renewed, correct?
So, well, no, okay. So, safety services, it's continuous years, fire levy was five years, road levy was continuous years, and bond levy is 26 years.
And the 17 is the date that it passed last time?
That's correct.
For the 2.7?
That's correct.
That was the last renewal, so that would, you could project five years.
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other residents just to speak? Okay, hearing none, we will move on and close the public hearing. Do we need to vote on this for just...
I don't know.
Okay.
7:31.
Okay. I'm going to start Facebook Live for the regular trustees meeting. If you may, that happens.
I mean, you have...
No, it's down now.
You have 30 days, you don't have to vote on it tonight.
Okay. And with that, we'll call to order the regular portion of the Concord Township Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Dawson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Lucci.
Present.
Mr. Don Dorfer.
Present.
And Mr. MacIntosh.
Present.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the May 19th, 2021 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the May 19th, 2021 Regular Trustees Meeting Minutes.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving into elected officials' reports, we'll start off with Ms. Glasser, Amy Dawson.
Amy, thank you. I think I had it. I guess you're not getting them, indeed. All right, well, here we go. As of May 31st, we are 42% of the way through the calendar year. The treasury balance for the 19 active funds within the township treasury was $6.8 million. Treasury balance includes $1.8 million in funds set aside for specific projects. Year-to-date expenditures were 21% of the amount appropriated, and revenue is at 30% received for 2021. Once the bonds fund tomorrow, we will be well within our budget at 75% of revenue for the year. We are estimated to receive $8,559,297.95 tomorrow from the bond sale, of which is $8 million principal plus the buyer's premium. $8 million will be set aside for the building of fire stations 1 and 2. Up to $100,000 of the money will be set aside to pay the cost of bond issuance, and the remainder, approximately $459,297.95, must be placed inside the bond retirement fund and can be used to pay off that fund early. There are no options where to place his premium, that's the only place it can go. If you have any other questions specific to that, or any of the revenue or expenditures, feel free to call me at 354-7516. You can leave me a message, I'll return the call. You can send me an email at adawson@concortwp.com, or feel free to reach out to anybody here at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. Moving into trustees, Mrs. Lucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was able to sit on a planning session with our architects for our fire station and utility heads to kind of look at some pre-construction planning, which, and our owner's representative was there, so, pretty exciting. Looking forward to getting that project running. I did have a discussion with a business owner along Cryle, asking about the Cryle Road line new project, and we're still waiting for a secure date when that will start. I wish to congratulate all the new grads graduating this week. Luckily, it'll look a little better, a little more normal with graduation, and I wish everybody the best on their future endeavors. I'd also like to thank our cemetery sexton, Ms. Karen Warner, on putting together a very nice Memorial Day on Monday, was well attended. And I'd like on her behalf to read this short dedication to our Women's Veteran Day, which is June 12th. So, she asked me to read this on my report, so this is for Karen and all of us to enjoy. The first Women's Veterans Day was held June 12th, 2018, marking the 70th anniversary of the groundbreaking Women's Armed Services Integration Act, signed into law by President Harry S. Truman on June 12th, 1948. That law enabled women to serve as permanent regular members of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, and the recently formed Air Force. On December 13th, 2019, Senate Bill 77 was introduced by Senators Sandra Williams, a U.S. Army veteran, and Frank Hoagland, a retired Navy SEAL, and signed into law by Governor Mike DeWine. There are currently 67,000 female Ohio veterans, with 1,100 from Lake County. Four female veterans are buried in the Concord Cemetery. Ruth Densmore, who was a World War II Navy, Ruth Extrum, World War II Army, Genevieve Short, World War II Coast Guard, and Marilyn Talbert, Korean War. We thank all the brave women who served and are currently serving our country.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Portman Lucci, Mr. Don Dorfer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank our residents who attended the Memorial Day service. On Monday, it was, as Amy said, very well attended, very solemn ceremony, and, you know, we had a lot of people turn up for that event. We thank our residents for being there. I did have a couple conversations with some residents on some different issues within the township. I'm going to meet with a resident over on Girdle Road later next week regarding some speeding issues she has near Keystone, and I'll follow up with our community resource officers, Sergeant Faubie, who's here with us today. I also had some calls on the township-wide trash that we're discussing right now as far as, you know, regular trash removal, recycling, yard waste, and bulk items. I'm sure you guys fielded some phone calls, too, and we're still in discussions on that, so please, if you have any opinion or want to discuss that, reach out to us, we're still working through that. I did speak with Mr. Saltzman, one of the owners of the new Lucky's Market that's going in, and he is going to be reaching out to us to set up like a little sneak peek of walk-through of the store. They're making a lot of progress there, so I totally would be interested in that. I know that they're having a...
Job fair.
Job fair tomorrow, so if anybody's interested, Lucky's is holding a job fair at the community center, I believe, in Concord. What time's that at, soon?
It's from 9 to 4.
Okay, 9 to 4, so if you're interested, great opportunity to be part of a great team in the new grocery here in Concord Township. Following up on that, I did have some discussion with our county engineer on the road widening project in regards to Cryle Road, and they're working on having the pre-construction meeting next Monday at 2 o'clock in the Commissioner's Chamber, so hopefully we can get that project moving along and get that north end done, so we can get that completed before the opening in late July, hopefully at Lucky's. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dorfer. Well, I have also received some communication respective to the trash hauler contract, and that's a tricky one. I know a lot of people live in a township and feel like they want to make that decision for themselves, but just as many people are saying, hey, will you please bring a full spectrum of service and save us some money? So, it's an interesting thing, as we continue to explore it, I think it's, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. I would continue to encourage residents that have questions or concerns to contact the trustees or Town Hall and ask questions and express an opinion, because it is important to us what residents feel and think, and the more feedback that we have, the easier it is to make a good decision, so I think that's important. Did attend the Memorial Day ceremony, and Karen Warner absolutely did a fantastic job, that was nice. We didn't get to do that last year, so it was the first time this board got to do that ceremony together, and it was moving, it was, it was nice to see people out, and I really enjoyed participating in that. So, that's, that was a fun thing, and I continue to ask, get questions about Cryle Road and Lucky's, it's kind of the never-ending, when are they going to open already? It's great that they're having the job fair. Again, great opportunity for people in the community. And I did also attend that Architects Code meeting with the code enforcement, the code agencies, and that was basically the architect and the county talking about all the various in the state, and the road, and all the permits and things that needed to be taken care of. So, it's kind of a cleaning, housekeeping meeting, as far as just information being shared amongst the multiple agencies that need to coordinate on that. And I did something I haven't done for quite a while, I attended the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting last night. I've been wanting to go back and hang out with this...
You picked a good one.
Yeah, well, and I didn't realize I was going to be here for two and a half hours. Hopefully, we don't go that long tonight, but it was good to see the board in action, and it's going to result in a public hearing here for us, so I'm glad I had the experience to see. And again, I guess I, kind of a township zoning geek, I mean, I, as much as I sat here, I enjoyed every minute of it, and I was dusting off my zoning caps, that was a lot of fun. Glad that I got to reiterate that, so... Moving along into our departments, Administrator Rose.
Thank you, Mr. MacIntosh, members of the board, Mrs. Dawson, members of the audience, good evening. There's a few things on tonight's agenda I'd like to cover briefly. Item B is a resolution requesting the County Auditor certify tax valuations for a renewal of the 2.7 mil fire operations levy. This is the first step of the renewal process. I would like to remind everyone that this is being sent to the auditor for certification as a five-year renewal with no increase. And, yeah, so, item D is a vote for a purchase order to Barbicas Construction for township parking lot resurfacing in the amount of $261,216.70. A bid opening was held on May 25th at 11:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. There were six bids received, and they were as follows, so I can read these on the record. Cunningham Paving, $266,328.43. Ohio Paving and Construction Company, $263,972.47. Roniak Paving Incorporated, $269,280.00. Barbicas Construction Company, $261,216.70. Chagrin Valley Paving Company is $293,595.50. And the sixth bid was Carvo Companies Incorporated, $277,885.00. This will be for repairs and resurfacing of the Town Hall parking lot, community center parking lot, the driveways associated with those, the service department driveway going all the way back, all of the service department area, and it also includes a new asphalt-access driveway where we're expanding the cemetery in the back of the 65 section, so I encourage affirmative vote on both of those items. Also, a big thank you to Karen, who's our cemetery sexton, and to everyone who participated and joined us for our annual Memorial Day ceremony to honor those servicemen and women who sacrificed for us. Cardboard recycle containers located in the parking lot will be removed during the week of June 28th, 2021. They will not be returning. One of the drivers, not the only driver, but one of the drivers for removing the containers is abuse. You know, recently, we have once again found construction debris discovered in the containers. On two other occasions within the past month, we found paint cans. In addition, you know, the parking lot's going to be resurfaced very soon with Barbicas, and quite frankly, the containers are unsightly and they don't belong in the front of Town Hall. There are cardboard recycle containers located at St. Gabe's Church on Johnny Cake Ridge Road. For anybody who wishes to recycle their cardboard, they can go to St. Gabe's. The proposal for a township-wide trash contract is still active, as mentioned by some of the trustees. We've heard from a number of residents on both sides of the aisle, for and against. I will say, even if hypothetically, if a single hauler agreement was reached today, service would not begin for approximately six months, because it takes a good deal of time to order the number of containers to get out to every household, community education. The trash company would, you know, have to redistribute their assets or order more trash trucks in order to fulfill the contract. And a reminder, the contract, if we went forward, would be for all residences on public streets. It includes curbside trash, it includes recycling, yard waste, and bulk pickup, and it would likely result in a savings for the vast majority of our residents. So, that's where we are there. So, it's still in the research and seeking input stage. Finally, I'm going to get out my soapbox for just a half a second. I'd like to remind everyone that our trustee meetings, our zoning commission meetings, our Board of Zoning and Appeals, BZA meetings, they're fully open to the public, and they're also broadcast on our township YouTube channel that you can access through our website. They're archived, they can be reviewed by anyone by going to the website. You can select the Public Meetings tab from the homepage, and you can watch the meetings over and over, pause them, rewind, and so forth. The trustee meeting is also streamed on Facebook Live. The trustees have also started publishing pull-out videos where they are discussing important topics, so that some folks don't have to wade through the administrators' report and all the other stuff. We're also available by phone, we're available by email, should anyone have any question or concern they wish to address. And we also have office hours available for anyone wishing to come in and chat with the elected officials. That usually takes place prior to the regular trustee meetings. And that concludes my report, sir, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Rose. I had a quick question. With respect to the construction materials and our paint and things that are left in our recycle bins, what is the resolution to that? I mean, is that, is that an added cost to us, repaying to deal with that?
Well, we've been, we've been checking it, and unfortunately, the service department, we, we take that stuff, and then we dispose of it properly through other means, but it, it takes guys away from their regular duties, having to babysit those things, so, but we check that on a regular basis, and, you know, we, we put out signage, hey, if the trash bins are full, or the recycle bins are full, please come back later. If you go out there right now, because tomorrow morning, the service department will be out there cleaning up all the stuff that's left on the ground where they're full, and people just set it on the ground, and, you know, if it's a windy day, then it's a mess, if it's not a windy day, then it's a quick cleanup.
Thank you. Okay, Fire Department, and because he asked nicely, Chief Sabo is off for this evening, so we have the privilege and honor of having Deputy Chief Terriaco in his place, so Deputy Chief, welcome.
Good evening. I think it's my first time presenting a monthly fire report to this board, very first time.
Oh, that's correct.
Yes. What honor to be here in your presence, sir.
Right back at you.
Right back at you. So, for the month of May, the total runs was 218. We had quite a few busy days, we were going non-stop. Quite a few of those days, that third ambulance was put in service handling those EMS runs, so, very busy. Total of 142 events for EMS runs, with 108 transports, eight fire events. In Concord, we had one structure fire, one greenhouse fire, one stove fire. Outside of Concord Township, two structure fires, a garage fire, kitchen fire, and a vehicle fire that we responded to. Mutual aid given was 15, mutual aid received was 16, so it balanced out pretty well. Fire prevention side, a total of 40 inspections, which came to about 70 hours. So, if I could just touch on a little bit more of the fire prevention report for you to help understand some stuff. So, when we go do that inspection, depending upon the size of the facility, if it's like a nursery next door, you're in and out pretty quick, but if you go to the hospital, it's pretty more complex, more floors, larger area to inspect, and there's more fire safety aspects to look at, great. So, sometimes, if you're trying to put together the amount of inspections to the amount of hours, that's why, because it's just not going in doing code enforcement, it's educating to be code compliant. Plan review, total of six, which was about 12 hours. Plan reviews are done between Brian Spanjberg, Doug Roth, and myself. Since we've brought Doug in and Brian in, I've slowly put in the plan reviews over to them for the buildings, the fire protection stuff. I still handle the developments and housing developments and stuff like that, site plan review, but I'm training Doug, so I'm getting those guys ready for my departure, so they're ready to also help Chief Sabo and the new deputy chief coming in. May fire investigations, in Concord, there was one. Public education, two foster home inspections with training on fire home safety, home exit plans, fire extinguishers, that kind of stuff. To touch on that a little bit while the inspectors are in there, doing those inspections, foster home, adoption homes, whatever, they also promote our Knox Box program, our smoke detector programs, CPR, fire extinguisher training, anything that we provide them, they promote that, and leave them contact numbers, so they can get ahold of us. We also, at the community center, for the seniors, we spent about an hour and a half, Doug did the other day. half, Doug did the other day, um, doing a safety talk and then provided fire extinguisher training for them, and I think it went very well, went very well. Um, and then three Knox Box installations. COVID-nineteen actions are lifting in many areas, so we have started back into our healthcare facilities and the assisted livings. We still wear our PPE as required, or if it's required from just the owners of those facilities, but what that's also given us an opportunity to do is get back to, because we missed the whole year of fire safety training for the healthcare providers, which those healthcare providers and those facilities need to maintain their certifications. So now we're able to get back in and start that, that training with them. ISO, everybody remembers, we went to a, from a four to a three. The other thing we're doing with the fire inspectors, for to myself, Doug, and Brian, is we are gonna hand-deliver to our businesses, and hopefully, we can get that person that maintains the facility or pays that insurance bill, to get them that, because that ISO three is probably a little bit of a reduction in their insurance coverage for those facilities. So over the next, we, our goal is over the next six months, because it took effect May first, a new rating, we get in and get that to them. In a period of two years, it naturally happens through insurance companies and the owner of the facility, but we wanna get that in a little bit quicker for it. And then finally, since we're talking about plan reviews here, the, uh, construction documents for Fire Station One did arrive, so we will start that plan review process. So that'll take a couple weeks, and remember that the building department, they're also look at that, pains of water, whoever, all those little that we met on the, in that meeting, they all, it takes time to go through that process. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Questions?
No.
Thanks, DC.
Thanks, DC.
And moving right on, Service Director Tim Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Service Department's construction season has begun. The two thousand twenty-one road resurfacing projects in the Cherry Hill and Fay Road subdivisions are underway. Uh, the concrete slab replacement program is also happening throughout the township. Our cracks heal program will be beginning in the coming week. The drainage crews are outperforming ditch maintenance, working with Lake County Stormwater Department to enhance stormwater runoff throughout the township. The yard waste drop-off will be closing on June seventh at two-thirty PM. The service will return in, in September and run until the end of November. Residents who need to get rid of their yard waste can take it to MRLM Landscape Materials located on Heasley Road in Mentor. The annual brush day drop-off was a big success this year, many residents took advantage of the service. Service Department would like to thank Accurate Landscape for taking all the brush for recycling. Uh, the service department last month took delivery of a twenty-six-inch core-cut road saw and a sixty KW emergency backup generator. The generator was purchased with funds from a NOPEC grant. We'd like to remind residents with any questions, concerns, to call the service department at four-four-zero-three-five-zero-three-two-two-five, or email us at concordtpw.com. That concludes my report. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
And, uh, zoning department, the Freeman.
All right, good evening. So during the month of May, the zoning department's been pretty busy with residents issuing permits. We processed forty permit applications and collected around six thousand dollars in application fees. Additionally, in May, we performed a hundred and seventy-three site inspections for open zoning permits and followed up on seventeen new complaints about potential zoning violations. Last night, uh, the zoning commission met for their regular meeting. Um, they had, they held two, uh, public hearings, proposed zoning text amendments and MAP amendment. Um, those amendments, um, and the zoning commission's recommendations have been provided to the trustees, um, this evening, um, and you'll see later on in your agenda item that you'll be, um, setting those public hearings. Um, next week, the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, will meet on Wednesday. The detailed agenda may be found on the township website under public meetings, and just, um, if there's any questions about any of these items or, um, about permits or anything that the zoning department can, um, help you with, feel free to give us a call, four-four-zero-three-five-four-seven-five-zero-five, or three-five-four-seven-five-zero-six. And I'm here for any other questions from the board.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay, and, uh, next we have the Recreation Department, and, um, excited to, to welcome Susie Cobb and Dan Maxson, um, and for everyone who's used to seeing Deborah Esker, we're very proud of her, she's graduating from Leadership Lake County this evening, so she is not able to be here, so, um, we are excited to have Susie and Dan, so we'll, uh, let you get on with it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ramon Hush. Good hea-, good evening, everyone. I am Susie Cobb, and I am the Administrative Assistant for the Concord Recreation Department. I know full aware, full well, that I will never be able to fill Deborah's shoes this evening, however, I hope, my hope is that I'll be able to make sure that everyone is fully aware of what is happening in our awesome community here. The biggest news from the Recreation Department for June is that our summer concert series are back. Thank you, Lord. Concerts begin this month on Thursday, June seventeenth, as we will welcome the Pop-Tarts back to our gazebo. If you enjoy girl group music of the sixties, this band is for you. Sing along as they serenade us with songs like "You Can't Hurry Love," "She, He's So Fine," and "Leader of the Pack." Then, on June twenty-fourth, enjoy the music of a new jazz and blue band called Hip to That. They play songs across the pop spectrum, "Cheek to Cheek" by Irving Berlin, to "Twenty-four Karat Magic" by Bruno Mars, and "Whole, Um, Whole, Whole Lot of Love" by Led Zeppelin. There is something for everyone on our, during our concerts in June, and July, and August. Um, the music will begin at seven at the gazebo at Town Hall. However, we also have several, um, craft vendors selling handmade items before the show and during the band breaks. Um, there's also Frank Bratz that will be serving dinner, and East Coast Custard will be on hand for dessert, and as always, Town Hall will be open for the restroom use. So grab your lawn chairs and head over to our first summer concert this year on June seventeenth. We are looking forward to all the concerts that will be, um, happening through the beginning of August, and make sure you mark your calendar for Thursday, August fifth, for a fun family night as we close out our summer concert series with a night full of activities, music, vendors, food, family fun, and more. Um, and we would also like today to congratulate our seniors, um, in Concord and in the school systems, because this is a really exciting time for them. Um, I would also like to remind everyone that the Recreation Department is always welcoming questions, comments, ideas, suggestions for events or programs. Um, we want to know what our residents want, and truly, we do, um, really, really value your feedback. So stop by the community center, email us, give us a call anytime. Deborah Rachel and I love, um, helping anything with our community and truly love to make things fun and have, um, a lot of, a lot of fun with the community. So our number is four-four-zero-six-three-nine-four-six-five-zero, or recreation@concordtpw.com. And finally, this is my love, um, hopefully, everyone knows by now that Concord Township will be celebrating our bicentennial in two thousand and twenty-two. In honor of this special year, um, an Image of America book is being written about our township. It has been a complete privilege, and I mean privilege, being able to help with the development of this book over the past plus, two-plus years. Coordinating the technical aspects of the photos, um, I got to see firsthand of the beauty and the meaningful photos that were donated to us by families. I met a lot of great residents in the process, um, current and past residents. I took a lot of pictures in Concord. Thank you for never stopping and arresting me, because I always told Deb that I, I, if I get arrested, just please let, know that I'm taking pictures that day. But in closing, um, I would like to take a moment to introduce my dear friend, um, Dan Maxson, who is our Old Stone School Docent, and he is also the co-author of the Image of America book, um, with Deborah Esker. And I must say, working with Deb and Dan over the past several years on this project is an honor, and I am grateful that we've had the opportunity to do this. So thank you, Dan, and here it is your turn to share a few words about this. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Susie.
Thanks, Susie.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, everybody.
Well, yeah, it's like in German, it's like du bist an der Wille, it's your turn, you know, so here it is. But I feel good though, because, I mean, look, we have a lot of first timers here, this must be like the first timer row right here, so I'm feeling good, but a lot of you that know me, I'm a retired school teacher from Euclid, athletic director, coach, so it's not my first time talking up here. So Deborah did leave me notes as the valedictorian tonight, saying that keep brief, just like my wife says, don't talk too long. And, uh, so thank you very much, you know, to the trustees, to Andy, to everyone in the audience. It has been a fun two years, uh, working on the book. Actually, the genesis of the book started about three years ago with the previous trustees, uh, embracing the idea of doing something special for March of two thousand and twenty-two. Many of you know I've been with the, uh, Old Stone Schoolhouse as a volunteer, as a docent, archivist, and everything since about two thousand and sixteen. I do a lot of the programs at the community center, uh, I open the schoolhouse, you know, at least monthly, and we've done a, a nice job of, uh, telling our story. You know, you, you look there, two-thirds of Lake Erie's underwater, or two-thirds of Lake County's underwater, but look at our little part, eighteen oh-two, we're like the smallest county with the most history, and Concord Township's right at the apex of it. So our book has a hundred and twenty-seven pages, eighteen thousand words, and in excess of about two hundred pictures. And, and the greatest thing about it is, Susie kind of alluded to a little bit earlier, is the idea that the township has kind of embraced it. I mean, we've had many residents that have been more than happy to kind of share their stories, share their family histories. Pandemic put a little challenge there, trying to do fact-checking when the Morley Library was closed, the Lake County History Center, but again, it's, uh, ahead of schedule. Last week, we did some of the final galley prints. Uh, the book is scheduled to be released August second. It'll actually be in Discount Drug Mart. The pre-orders are already, uh, out at the distribution centers for Amazon, Target, Barnes and Noble, uh, like I said, Discount Drug Mart will be holding at Chian Eagle as a, gonna be a distributor. Uh, last week, we started to explore the opportunities with our, uh, marketing consultant about getting some of the local businesses in the township, put it on their shelves, like the Blank Boutique and some of our local businesses. Uh, so like I said, it's been a, it's a three-year haul, three-year journey, but it's, uh, coming to fruition here, and the biggest thing is, pre-orders start July sixteenth. So you call over, Deborah, at the community center, uh, we guarantee we'll give you an autographed copy, you know, if you preorder there. So, uh, so that's what's gonna happen, so I'm glad it was, it was been a great trip. I've enjoyed all my time volunteering at the schoolhouse, doing programs, leading hikes, different things, the Chair Factory Falls. So to the current trustees, you know, thank you for, you know, affording me this opportunity. Past trustees who kind of embraced the idea, you know, I've been here almost four decades in the township, and I've enjoyed, you know, living in the township where you have kind of the best of everything. So thank you very much, glad to take your part and participate in the township.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, I did have a chance to look at that draft that they brought over, and that was, wow, it was really fun to look through that, and you just, it just makes you feel real warm about Concord, it was really, it was really fun, so.
I'm sitting in some of those committee meetings for the bicentennial, listening to the work that, you know, Susie and Dan and Deborah have done on this book. It, it, it's amazing. I mean, you guys really, thank you very much, you've done an outstanding job, we're excited about it, um, it's, it's gonna be great.
Looked like a ton of work. Yes.
It's nice because people have stepped up, too.
Right.
I mean, you know.
Yeah.
A lot of people have these stories, and there's not a thing for them, the Express Miami Found, the Martin Van Buren, Chad's, ballots all the way back, you know, eighteen forties.
Those are great.
Community members like Lowheiser, who's own the store down there, talking about remembering, you know, the road being paved for the first time in nineteen fifty-nine.
Wow.
You have a lot of the former families that own farms, you know, in the township during the fifties and earlier, so it's.
Even Facebook has brought people that we reached out to that, people that, oh my gosh, I want to help.
Yeah, thank you all.
It's gonna be fantastic, we're looking forward to the next year, so thank you. All right, and, uh, wrapping up our department reports, we have Sergeant Falby from the Lake County Sheriff's Department with the law enforcement report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, for the month of May, we had eight hundred and ninety-eight calls for service, uh, six of which were injury accidents, nineteen were property damage accidents, uh, we had a disorderly conduct arrest, we had three OBI arrests, we had, uh, one domestic violence abduction and assault arrest, disorderly conduct with an open container arrest, breaking and entering theft of a motor vehicle arrest, a hit-skip DUS arrest, two juvenile for curfew and trespassing arrest. We had forty-four alarms, fifteen citations, a hundred and twenty-four warnings issued for traffic violations, fifteen driving under suspension citations. We had, uh, our deputies conducted ninety-three business checks and fifty-two crime prevention checks. We had twenty-one animal complaints, uh, two ATV complaints, um, one being on Jason Avenue and the other one being on Far Hill Drive, both in the same development. Um, we, we've had some chatter about, uh, ATV problems within that development, so we, you know, decided to tackle them as best as we could. So I responded out to a few residents, uh, spoke to the, the residents in person, either by phone or in person at the house. Um, both were extremely receptive to what I had to say, both were, uh, very cooperative, understanding, and they, they have made corrective, uh, actions, uh, you know, to, to fulfill our agreement with what we should probably be doing on the roadway. So very good outcome with that, um, and rectified that situation. Uh, breaking and entering of a structure, one, breaking and entering of a vehicle, one. Uh, civil complaints, we had eleven, disabled vehicle assist, twenty-two, uh, again, two disorderly conducts, five disturbances that we responded to. Um, aside from the, um, the arrest for domestic violence, we responded to three domestic violence incidents, but they didn't necessarily end up with an arrest. Two drug investigations, nine harassment and threat complaints, eighteen hazardous calls, three juvenile complaints, which coincides with the two that we arrested, uh, four mental health emergency admission, uh, complaints where we had to take somebody who was suicided to the hospital. Uh, noise complaints, fourteen, um, one, only one, thank God, opiate overdose this, this time around, one sex offense being investigated, only one shots fired complaint for the month of May, which is down, uh, one stolen vehicle complaint, one suspicious, uh, forty-five suspicious circumstance, that includes vehicle persons and any other type of suspicious or action where they wanted the deputies to check it out, six theft complaints, forty-three traffic complaints, um, sixteen traffic details, and I'll touch base on the traffic complaints here coming up, uh, nineteen vehicle lockouts, four warrant arrests, uh, and seventeen weapons complaints. Um, as far as the traffic complaints go, I understand we've had some issues with, with speeding. Um, when we get these, uh, complaints or these concerns, we do put out the shift briefing for the zone cars to set up tra- uh, traffic details in those areas, so they are more vigilant, and they do take numbers for them and record that, what their findings are. That's where the warnings come from, and that's where the crime prevention numbers come from as well. Um, also, we're gonna be getting the trailers out there, they will be out there very, very, very shortly. I have a list, uh, in order, uh, from, um, from the most complaints, uh, to the least, where we'll get the trap, the trailer out there in a timely fashion. Um, also, as far as the Jake Brake goes, we have been monitoring that, we have been ta- pulling case numbers to do, um, monitoring of the Jake Brake issue that was along forty-four. Um, right now, I'd, they might have been warnings that they issued, but I, I don't think that when they were taking the numbers, that they were finding too many issues with it where they had to make traffic stops. Uh, OSP was made aware, too, for when they're going up and down forty-four. Um, visited with the seniors as well, with, uh, firefighter out, over at the Concord Community Center, that was very good. Uh, we, we had a great time, did a lot of good lesson learning, and, uh, we provided a lot of information for the reverse nine-one-one. Um, I'll be at the park concert. I'll be at the Park Concert. We'll have some handouts, some information, and then if anybody wants to come and talk to us. We'll be at Opening Day for the Little League at Lammouth coming up in June. It's buckle click it or ticket month. So, you know, just a reminder, when you're driving, please make sure that you're wearing your seatbelt. When you have kids, anybody should be wearing the seatbelt, no matter where they're at in the car, but it is in the ORC that if you're 15 or younger, you do have to be secured in a, some kind of mechanism, either a seatbelt, car seat, booster seat, in the backseat. We had 15 fatalities in Lake County last year, seven resulted with somebody who was not wearing a seatbelt, who otherwise would probably still be with us. So please, please wear your seatbelt when you're out and about. If I may, we are hiring, if I can do a little pitch for that, if you don't mind. Okay, so we are hiring deputies. We have a few in training now. We have 11 deputies who live in Concord, so they, our deputies do call Concord their home. They already do live in the township. They call it their home, like I said. They have a concern just like you. They have, they want success for their township, just like any of you do. So we are, you know, Concord is our home, and all the guys who work in the area, Concord is, we want the same outcome for you guys. We want to be safe, we want to be secure, we want pride in our, in our community. We just hired a deputy who lives in Concord. He's a Riverside graduate. He's in his early 20s, so we just hired him. He'll be joining the force, so you have another community member that's joining. But we are still hiring deputies, so if you have anybody who is looking for a job, we would like you to apply with our Sheriff's Office. Our Road Patrol starts out at 3251 an hour. We top out at 3494 an hour. We have overtime, paid holidays, vacation time, extremely good health benefits, very low copays, very low deductibles, if any at all. Longevity pay, if you have college or special education such as paramedic, EMT, et cetera, we offer bonuses for that, too. So please apply with us online, in person at the Sheriff's Office, or check us out on Facebook. And our Corrections Division is also hiring, if you have anybody who's looking for a job. They start out at 2394 an hour, they top out at 2634 an hour, and the same benefits as far as healthcare, time off, et cetera, as the Road Patrol does. So please visit our website, take a look. It's a great place to work, and you can help out making Concord a safe and secure location, just like we do.
Thank you, Sergeant Enval. Okay, moving on to the audience portion, I want to take a minute and just touch on a couple of things, as we've made some changes with respect to our policy. We've shut down the online access as far as the call-in to the trustee meetings now, and we've pulled back from having it in the office hours as well. So the trustees are made available by phone. You can reach all of us by phone or email. You can call Town Hall. Town Hall is now open, and as we know, the state's lifted all the restrictions, so we're back to having live meetings. We find that our practices are very well within line amongst other governments in Lake County, and so we just want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to contact us, and that's consistent with other entities in the county that are performing the same sort of function. So that was a bit of a change for us recently. I'd also like to remind everybody, as Administrator Rose said, that we do have the trustee-focused topics and all of the recordings of our conversations. And so the idea of the focused topics was to make it easier for people to see, hey, I want to see what the trustee's saying with the trash. I want to catch this update or whatever. It's all there. You can find it on our YouTube channel, you can access it through the Facebook page. And again, I know we all take phone calls all the time. So with that, I'll move into the audience portion, and if there's any residents here this evening that would like to speak. Okay. Mr. Massey, would you just repeat your name and address for them?
I'm here to compliment Concord's Recreation Department, and I attended the Schoolhouse, and I'm just amazed about what we have in that Schoolhouse. The history is just amazing, and Dan does a tremendous job. So I'm looking forward to that book, and I'll be sure to get one. And we would highly recommend, if any Concord resident has not actually taken the time to see the Schoolhouse, we highly recommend that they do that. It's really outstanding. The other compliment I have is for a young lady by the name of Rachel Lamb. She, I'm part of her Thursday hiking group. We're called Rachel's Rangers, and she does a, she's got a great personality, and we would highly recommend, you know, Concord residents, if you've got time on Thursday, to come to our hiking club. We go to the various Lake Metro parks, and that, that in and of itself is an absolute jewel within, within the community, and we would highly recommend that. So kudos to Rachel Lamb and the Recreation Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other members in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we will move into our old business, and that approval of the preliminary plan for Quell Hall of PUD, Offal Road, parcel 30 by Quell Hall Developers, Inc., is still tabled issue for now, so we will move into the new business. And first item in the new business is a vote to approve the May financial report.
I will make a motion to approve the May financial report.
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Question carries.
Chairman, I move to vote on Resolution 2021-07, requesting that the county auditor certify the total current tax valuation of Concord Township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the renewal of the 2.7 mil fire levy.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there any discussion?
Just to reiterate, Mr. Rose, it's not an increase, it's straight renewal.
Correct. This is straight renewal, five years, no increase. Effective millage is somewhere between 2.3, 2.4 mils. I don't remember the exact amount. I actually think, I think Mr. Massey might have mentioned earlier, somewhere in that 2.3, 2.4.
That's going to be it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that we discussed this a bit last year. We took calls and questions about this during our stakeholder meetings with respect to the forestation construction project, so I know we talked about needing a renewal and not seeking for more, so.
Yeah, there's some people who are concerned whether or not it would be an increase, and what you said, just a renewal.
Okay. And having a motion, go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approved tax budget for 2022.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Resolution Number 2021-08, to approve the tax budget for year 2022.
And I second.
Okay, and is there any discussion?
I thought Mrs. Dawson did a great job explaining that.
I'd be happy to read the whole resolution if you'd like me to.
Okay.
Sure. Whereas the 2022 Concord Tax Budget must be adopted by the Concord Township Board of Trustees on or before July 15th, 2021, whereas the original and one copy must be submitted to the Lake County Auditor on or before July 20th, 2021, whereas it is found and determined that all formal actions of the Board of Trustees of Concord Township concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Board of Trustees of Concord Township, and that all deliberations of this board that resulted in those formal actions were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Therefore, be it resolved that the 2022 Concord Township Budget for Funds Requesting General Tax Revenue has been adopted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to award the Concord Township Parking Lot Reservicing Project to Barbicus Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $261,216.70.
I'll second.
Okay, and passed, all recognizing that this is a project that's way overdue and desperately needed. Is there any additional discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to vote for Fire Department to approve the purchase order to Stryker in the amount of $8,650.80 for life pack and Lucas service contract.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next two items on our agenda are what Mrs. Freeman had mentioned to us, that is the two public hearings that came out of the zoning commission yesterday, so we need to schedule those, and I think we had talked about scheduling them on the next meeting, which will be June 16th, and we are going to replace office hours, so we'll do those starting at 6:30, and then we'll have the trustee meeting shortly thereafter. So we will go ahead and set the public hearing for zoning amendment application 2021-1 by ALM Lake Properties LLC, requesting a zoning resolution map amendment and preliminary plan approval from the current zoning district of R1 Residential to R2 Residential Conservation Development for the following properties. 10090 Hus Road, current parcel number 10-A-026-C-00-00, or 055-0, owned by Shirley A. Hus Road, rear, current parcel number 10-A-026-C-00-051-0, owned by Shirley A. Locksman. 10-100 Hus Road, current parcel number 10-A-026-C-00-062-0, owned by Shirley A. Locksman. Morley Concord, current parcel number 08A-2600-0750, owned by William H. Locksman, T.R. 7574 Morley Road, current parcel number 08A-026-00003-0, owned by Jerry V. Patriarca. And 7554 Morley Road, current parcel number 08A-026-0000-22-0, owned by Jerry V. and Constance M. Patriarca. And a portion of 0Isley SQ Concord, current parcel number 08A-26000560, owned by Humanitarian Consulting LLC. And we're setting that for.
LTD.
LTD, I'm sorry. LTD. And so we're setting that for 6:30 on June 16th. Kind of feel like we're back on the zoning.
Yeah.
And then we'll follow by setting a public hearing for the following zoning amendment to the Concord Township zoning resolution as initiative as zoning commission. Amendment 1, Section 5.02 definitions modifies the existing definitions for microbrewery, microdistillery, and changes the existing term urban winery to microwinery as definition for brewery, distillery, or winery. Amendment 2 is for Section 13.35, microbrewery, microdistillery, or urban winery includes specific conditions for said uses and amends the conditions to include provisions required uses to operate in accordance with Ohio Division of Liquor Control and the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Requirements to hold current licenses to file and provide reports demonstrating annual production has not exceeded the limit to prohibit outdoor storage and to prohibit emission of odorous matter or smells that would produce a public nuisance or hazard. And Amendment 3 of Section 22-03, Table of Uses, adds brewery, distillery, or winery as permitted uses in the RD2 Research and Limited Industrial District, and we'll set that public hearing to follow the RC3s on request. All right, so that wraps that up, and we will close up with future meetings announcements. Mrs. Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. On June 9th at 7:00 PM, Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting will be held here at Town Hall. At 5:30 PM on June 16th, here in our conference room.
Yep.
The trustees will be meeting with the Charten Township trustees concerning their joint road projects. It's, well, you're going to cancel office hours then? So they'll be canceling office hours that evening. At 6:30, the first public hearing will be held for the zoning amendment applications as read by Mr. McIntosh. Immediately following that public hearing, there'll be a second public hearing that evening regarding the zoning commission amendments. Zoning, am I saying that right, Heather? Okay. And then immediately following that public hearing, the regular trustee meeting will be held here at Town Hall.
All right, and with that, shall adjourn.
Good evening.